Let the call is ringing to order, please.
Adequate notice that this meeting is provided in accordance with Chapter 231 Public Law, nineteen seventy five Senator Byron and Bear Open Public Meeting Act.
I'd like to have the indication, please, of over the silence. We'd like to have Commissioner Victoria Loes. You can pledge your allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Local flag, please.
Commissioner Albrecht.
Here.
Commissioner Loes.
Here.
Commissioner Sorrow.
Here.
Commissioner Marchand.
Here.
Commissioner Taylor.
Here.
Deputy Director Romero.
Here.
Director Saleo.
Here.
Do I have a motion in second for open public comment on Resolution Zonier?
Second.
Second.
Who's Zonier? All favor.
Aye.
You know the routine? We definitely know the routine, right?
What?
State your name.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
True size.
Pete Holkner for Deerfield. There you go. Resolution twenty twenty-four ten, one ten. And everybody that's been here for a while, I've shown enough, will know the lawyer fees. I see we, the guy got somewhere around ten thousand dollars. How much did it cost us in lawyer fees?
So I don't have the final bill on this, but significantly less, given it was at a hearing at the AOL than litigating it all the way through had not been. At the time, it looked like the best course of action for the county.
Significantly less would be less than fifty percent.
Sure, a full-blown trial on the thing I would estimate to be between twenty to twenty-five grand to present the groups.
Yeah.
At Superior Court, and it would wind its way through the courts to get there. And the appeal is, of course, a no-go by right out of Bay of, so you really have accomplished the early, you have the right system.
Just for the heck of it, who was the law firm that represented us?
This was the Testo law firm.
Okay, thank you. On the resolution one twelve, there must be a great story around this. How's it do with the jail and the bathroom?
I'd like to defer that to Commissioner Romero. He had the same question you did.
Okay.
So Commissioner, would you like to call up Minister Albeano when you get a chance? Question two.
I, listen, I, the resolution came out, the new resolutions came out, and I called on Friday, Saturday morning, I called Cilio, Commissioner Cilio, right away, and we picked up on it, so I know you guys were, that was one of the things that you guys were gonna do. And you picked up, I mean, the only difference is, we did a lot more work than it says there, but it's gonna be atomized from now on. This will not be accepted, you know, but it's gonna be revived and atomized it. So will I chuck you some of this on the mic?
Chuck up, you want? Chuck, is Chuck up?
I had a conversation with the.
I did too, today.
It's, it's not just a bathroom, it's, remember, the jail has a lot of security things that have been watching, pointing out some things they do. But the, this is actually two projects, and some of the areas in jail weren't gonna be used anymore. We have to, because we're up to.
Hundred eighty.
Hundred eighty inmates. We're taking inmates back from Hudson County, which is a good thing. And so we have to upgrade areas that haven't been upgraded a while. And remember, Matt, you know, because you've been all these meetings with us, that.
Here he is. Chuck up, Albeano's here now. He just walked in. He just walked in, so he can answer your question in full detail, but do me a favor, some of the issues are not very appealing to the general public, if you understand what I mean by that, because we're talking about plumbing. So, so he'll, he'll speak to the issue as soon as he gets in.
This is the toughest thing, where he apologizes and she apologizes, but it's so hard to say it like that.
No, not at all. It's an ongoing project. You're up.
You're up.
Okay, thank you. You're welcome. How are you?
Okay, I'm not sure of the question, but I think I know the answer. Jeff, did you explain at all the, how we structured it?
Yeah, contract mechanism, no, it was more focused on what the actual scope of it was.
Okay, okay. Because I think there were questions that came from both, so if I mess up on your part, jump in. But it's really not an expansion of work or a cost overrun or anything like that. There really are three additional individual projects that are part of that. Jeff just said the more transparent way and appropriate way to list it financially was to do it this way for resolution. So I hope that addresses at least the fact that it's not like a cost overrun or anything like that. It's three additional projects that were not part of the original scope. There are three, I'll go with the simplest one, was we needed a sink, a large sink replacement in the kitchen where our food prep is done. I was able to secure the funding for that out of my twenty twenty-three budget. We paid for that and had the sink in place, and it's really just the installation of something that was purchased in twenty twenty-three. We were able to spread the cost out that way over two fiscal years, so we wouldn't pound so much into twenty-three. The second aspect, I think at different times publicly, and certainly with the county administration and commissioners, I let them know that our, with our staffing, our target goal is to have about a hundred and fifteen to a hundred and twenty-five incarcerated persons at the facility. What I've, that's a goal. The experience has been that with our best efforts at times, and this is one of the times, we've fluctuated, I think our count today was one eighty-five. So we're well above where I wanted to be. Part of that is coordinating with getting some of the additional people out to Hudson. Hudson has had their own issues with COVID this winter, so I think they kind of slowed down a little bit with us. Another factor, and it's, it's actually a good thing from a county perspective, is the courts and the prosecutor and public defenders have accelerated getting these cases through the court system. So what we're finding ourselves in, of that hundred and eighty-five that are there today, twenty-five to thirty of them are actually inmates who we permanently transferred to Hudson, who have to be back in Cumberland this week for court. So in order to make sure we get them there on time, we bring them in in advance of the court date, so we have them available. So that, part of this project is also to increase bed space. So when I got initial funding when I came on board last year, if we were, when we're able to keep our population more in the one twenty to one twenty-five range, it's easier for us to keep them in the newest portion of the jail, which is the annex. So when we expand to this extent, we're forced to populate almost the entire new jail as well. So we've had to continually do additional plumbing projects. The, almost all of the plumbing in the new jail needed to be upgraded and replaced. So what we've done over the year that I've been here and up until now is gradually, as we need them replaced, and what you see before you now is one of the final pieces of plumbing in the new jail, so that we can have bed space. Whether I prefer to have a hundred and twenty-five or, the reality is, when I have a hundred and eighty-five, I have to find a place to sleep them, and it has to have running water, and it has to have a toilet that works. So a chunk of that money is dedicated to that. The, the last piece on this, the third component of it, is in the annex, which is the newer part of the jail, we have plumbing in the showers that's over thirty years old. And what that plumbing was, and as soon as I tell you, you're gonna wonder why they ever did it, and that part I can't explain. But in order for incarcerated person to take a shower, they have to hit a button, and that puts the water on for about thirty seconds. So what they continually have had to do is basically try to take a shower with one hand holding a button and try to wash themselves, wash themselves with the other. Not that it's not funny, but when they tell me the story, they're not laughing quite as much, but obviously, it's a problem. So what they've done, you know, incarcerated people being what they are, they've found ingenious ways to jam things in the plumbing to keep the button in, tie strings to hold it in, and over time, it's just, you know, long story short, is that plumbing needs to be replaced. So what we're doing is, they had already done it several years ago in the new jail, they had gone and replaced them with more conventional knobs that just like in your shower turn the water on, you know, so that they can take an appropriate shower. I know there was some concern expressed, I saw something posted where there was an observation about the cost and how much it costs. The only thing I can tell you is, it's a really extensive project, and when you think of plumbing in a jail or a prison setting, please don't think of it like it's your home. It's often in very obscure areas, it takes a lot of work to get to, sometime they have to actually remove pipes to get it pipes, it's a very detailed process. The only thing I can tell you is, the contractor that you see putting in all three of these northeast is the county-approved plumber. And I spoke to my gentleman in overseas maintenance for Shray before he came in, and he's been doing this for fifteen years, and he said he isn't. We have never had an instance where we've had to have them come back in and redo anything that they've done, which I can tell you right now, if you've ever dealt with contractors, that's not always the case. And I can tell you that they don't work in an unmonitored setting. We always have security people with them and maintenance in and out. So all I can tell you is that we have never had any instance or circumstance where we question their integrity of their billing or anything like that. If they're, if they put two hundred and forty man-hours on it, first of all, that's a hundred and twenty for two people. They're gonna be there for the hundred and twenty hours, or if they get it done sooner, then they're gonna bill us four ninety or whatever the actual hours they are. We've never had an issue once, and in fact, they've been a huge help to us, because as you can imagine, it's not like a conventional building. If you have a plumbing problem here, you can kind of shut the building down, get it straightened out, and come back in. We have to operate through it, so there's times when we have plumbing emergencies. That northeast has been a great and reliable resource for us in that regard. So I just want you to know that we will continue to be good stewards of the money and monitor that whatever this commission approves will be spent appropriately and monitored that way. So I hope that answered the question.
Sure.
Yes.
Well, I'm not questioning the honesty side of your side or northeastern. What I'm, what we question is, it's all over Facebook, so I don't wanna say, toilet and a sink, twenty-nine thousand nine hundred dollars. I would like to see more, an invoice which is more atomized to prove why we spent for twenty-nine thousand nine, because it is all over Facebook, and I wasn't happy to see that.
Okay, but if I can interject, it is broken down between labor and parts, and fortunately, we have a lot of the parts already on hand for this particular work that we're doing. So most of what you say is labor cost. So it's hard to break down labor beyond the fact that so many hours at the hourly rate, and I think we did ask for a more detailed. And the problem that you run into with plumbing is, until you get back into some of these areas, you really don't know what, all of what you're gonna find until you get in there. So there, there's some miscellaneous parts that are listed, because it's really difficult until they get in and do the job to know. But I think if you look at them closely, you'll see that the overwhelming majority of the funding is for labor and not for parts, so it.
And I do think that I, Antonio, I know what you're speaking of, and I think, you know, maybe some people oversimplified the project, just saying it's a simple showerhead. And what, what we're dealing with at the county jail is not your, your bathroom, your home, so.
I, I know that, and you know that, Chuck knows that, but when we got ten thousand people out there in Facebook saying that the county just spent twenty-nine thousand nine hundred dollars in a sink and a toilet, you know, it's not, it doesn't, it doesn't excuse.
I did plumbing work. That was my, that was my business. Yeah, a little bit, and I gotta admit, I was thinking about canceling, doing, going back into work again, but it's not money. The reason why I say that is, even after reading that, okay, now, I did work in a jail years ago, and it's a pain in the neck for security, where the amount of time it takes you to get from your truck to that particular area and back down to the truck or wherever, if you forget something, you waste a lot of time. I understand that. They don't know that.
Exactly.
Okay? So what Commissioner Romero was speaking of, if he could just give a little more information, because seriously, when I read the invoice, I went, okay, I wish I was still in business. So I'm just saying to you is that we need a little bit more explanation, not so much just for the commissioners, but for the public, I mean, and they do that.
And I'm, again, that's why I'm here and standing here. I'm not sure how I can convey.
No, we appreciate the clarification, I think maybe just asking for more detail from, from the.
Northeastern, yeah.
And listen, I.
But I, I would like to commend you for keeping a building open and running in such a way that you had, a building that has been neglected by the county for a number of years, and I would like to give you a lot of commendations for that.
And listen, I appreciate that, and it's honestly, it's the, it's the unspoken thing in this room right now.
And direct, direct, also, it's not your control, I mean, talk to social media. So it, it was something that maybe not was necessarily misrepresenting, but just the optics of it looked very suspicious, and that's what brought it out. So at this point, at this point, though, to not relabor the decision, it's very explainable when you get down to weeds and it all.
Sure.
So I think that's pretty much where we need to let it stand at this point. Mr. Rock, I think you're satisfied with this. And if you want to speak further with me about it, I can get into nitty-gritty about what the director spoke to me about, and it's not pleasant, so.
I'd be, I'd be, I have one other question. Sure. You mentioned about a thirteen-hundred-dollar bill that you paid in one year and put it on another budget, the twenty-three budget. I'm wondering, is this somewhat normal, or was it creative accounting?
No, 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 that's, maybe I didn't make it clear. I purchased the item, the sink, out of my twenty-twenty-three budget, but did the, first of all, we had to wait for it to come in, well, we had to wait for it to come in first, but it was purchased with twenty-twenty-three funds, but the installation was being done in twenty-twenty-four.
Good enough.
Yeah, because it wasn't, it wasn't, I'm not that clever, but everybody.
It's a part of the building that's been, we weren't really thinking of upgrading to get it rolling, we counted straight on the annex, so that we had to start through stuff.
And listen, it's a very difficult thing to understand, Ray always hits me with one, one quick thing that I'll just tell you. We had an instance where he had, Ray, as my maintenance guy, got confronted about the cost of a toilet. So any of you, we all go to Home Depot, you all see, you can buy a toilet for probably a little over a hundred dollars to three hundred dollars, and they were questioning why our toilets are several thousand dollars, because they're not conventional toilets, and it's, it's just the nature of the beast, and it's hard, it really is hard for people to wrap their heads around. So that's why I'm here every month, and I'm always wanting to answer these questions, and, and we know.
Very good, sir.
Thank you, Tommy, no, we appreciate it.
Anybody else?
Let's speak after, huh? Please state your name, sir, your address, anything else you want to state, and then we'll try to handle five minutes.
Vic Bemidos, taxpayer, Hopeville Township. Officer, present PBA two thirty-one. Going off where Albeano said, the jail, which I'm happy to report, is getting fixed. In the past, these items that they're fixing weren't fixed for years, but we have rooms that are down that we could use for two to, two to four inmates in each room that have been shut down since twenty eighteen. And what I can't say about the past is, there was a lot of money being spent in the jail. I'm not gonna miss any words, they were creating a narrative to shut it down like, like they did with the manor. It's, it's, it's too cost, it's not cost-effective, we're spending the money that we're getting, so they were running up the bills and not fixing anything. And that's where we are now, but I can say that it's totally different now. So when I saw that bill, and I'm thinking in my head, that's kind of cheap compared to all the stuff that is broke down in the jail, because I worked in, I was a bricklayer in construction too, so I know the sknacks, you guys can understand that the floors were like two feet thick deep, and there's no drilling and digging in there, it's, it's, it's a structure building that's filled with a lot of concrete and getting through old systems. So we have a lot of rooms that are down, the inmate council going up, all New Jersey, by a hundred, in all of New Jersey, every single county jail is going up. And it's because, I don't wanna say anything bad about Bay Area reform, I got my own opinion about it, but it's catching up, everybody's catching up. So when we bring people from Hudson County, that one inmate may have seven charges, so he's coming down for his second one. He's got five more to go, so they're gonna keep coming back, keep coming back to get adjudicated on each thing that they were arrested for. So this is gonna cause a problem, and we're not the only ones, the whole state's having a problem with running out of room, because the thing was, Bay Area forms doing this and that, and really, it's, it's not, it's just buying time for the inevitability of getting back to where we were. So with that being said, I'm happy to report that we're looking like open for business, not shutting down, and they're trying to house the inmates properly. The showers, they've been down for, since twenty seventeen, twenty sixteen, a lot of rooms inoperable since twenty eighteen, and they didn't wanna fix them because they figured they were gonna shut it down. So now we're getting to fixing, and I'm happy to report that that's what I'm seeing, and I know what they're talking about. It's been a problem, it's been a, it's a disgusting problem that's been there for a while, and it's getting addressed, and I understand that they can't tell you, itemize, because they haven't dug down and got into it yet, and it's scary when I think about when they do what they're gonna say. And also, I came up here to ask about the resolution for the operational subcommittee for the county jail. I wanted to know if at some point, where I was gonna go out on a long limb and see if any of the unions could be involved on the subcommittee for one, and two, at any point, will we be briefed on how the meetings are going, and what the meetings entail, and what's gonna happen?
Mr. Bemidos, we have a partial answer for you at this time.
Okay. Well, I'm gonna use my time, and you can go ahead and answer, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Carley, please.
Sure, so I can report that I attended a meeting of the wardens, of the participating county wardens, and of course, that was tasked with beginning to meet, as was the other group that was referred to, and it is patently clear that the unions are stakeholders that need to be involved in those conversations from an early point. And that was raised in the meeting with the wardens, it's been raised in the larger group, so it's become, the key is to formulate a group to begin to set the thing on a path, and then, of course, the sending police, the prosecutor, the public defender, the unions, right? It goes on and on, but the states absolutely need to be involved in that point, so.
And basically, what we're doing is, is what basically the case study said, we're including everybody at this point in time. It's a smaller group at this point, but eventually, I'm sure that the smaller group will reach out.
It's been mentioned in the, in the larger group, right, with the commissioners, and it's also been mentioned in the wardens group, so.
That's why they're planning, it's a year of planning, to see, that's what, that's what they're trying to do, is get, so it's not right in the second, but it should be, you will be involved, because we're planning to make it go over this period of year, so when we open two thousand twenty-five, everybody's on board, ready to go, so.
Thank you.
Anybody else from public comments?
Motion closed.
I'm looking at Mr. Mitchman and go, I think, give him one, something, something. Say hello to us.
I'm such an encouragement.
There you go.
Good evening, I'm Nancy Ridgeway from Papa Deerfield and Fairfield Township. We have a resolution here this evening, it's Resolution twenty-two-four dash one oh nine, and it's a resolution authorizing approval to submit a grant application and to execute a grant agreement with the New Jersey Department of Labor and Workforce Development for the fiscal year twenty twenty-four WIOA Summer Youth Work Experience Program. Could we have some more information on this? It sounds very interesting.
Christie's here.
Christie's here.
Okay, I was just looking here, okay.
This is so funny.
Mrs. Leonardo was hiding with the backseat.
I know. She's got on rent too for Valentine's Day.
I'm a day early. Hello, everyone, my name is Christie DeLeonardo, and I'm the Director of the Cumberland Sale and Cape May Workforce Development Board, and Nancy, thank you for that question. This is actually our third summer, having this summer youth program. We are looking to apply for a little less than four hundred thousand dollars this year to put about a hundred youth between the ages of sixteen to twenty-six years old into employment and internship-type programs. Each one will make about sixteen dollars an hour, and they will work no more than about two hundred hours for eight weeks, and that will start right after school. We also have some slots available for some college interns, because I know it was very, very difficult over the last couple of years, so that, for them to be able to graduate college and get their bachelor's degree or even associate's degree. So we have connected with the employers in our community, so that they're able to be able to do their engineering side, or if it was the healthcare side, we're connected with Inspira, so that's what that program is all about. It was, it's been very, very successful. So we're hoping that after this year, maybe the New Jersey Department of Labor will make it a full-year-round program instead of just a summer program. Does that answer your question?
Anything else?
She's laughing.
Very good.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody else? Go ahead, please.
Drive a motion?
Your motion, thank you.
Jim, you have a motion, I was gonna.
A second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Resolution twenty-two-four dash one oh nine, Resolution authorizing approval to submit a grant application and to execute a grant agreement with the New Jersey Department of Labor and Workforce Development for fiscal year twenty twenty-four WIOA Summer Youth Work Experience Program. Do I have a motion and second?
Second.
Second. Commissioner Albrecht.
Yeah, and I have, yes, I just have a comment about that it is a very successful program. We took full advantage of it in the county to bring in interns, I think most departments at least grab somebody on this, and on, and hopefully, the, as it grows, and it was met, it grows into a full-time, I would love to bring more and more interns into this, into this building, college interns or high school, to take advantage of, to show them what can be done, or how they could maybe earn a living in this county. county. So, and this program fits perfectly with that. Uh, what am I going to do here to, uh, one thing I asked that maybe, one of the things could be shortened, there's some kind of, uh, trading part at the beginning of the program that could be shortened so people actually do have more work experience than sitting in, I don't understand that all part of it. If you designed it, could you add, shorten that period of time so they could spend more time with the, the field?
We actually did, I have to get up there again.
Yeah, I'm just saying, right.
So we actually did request that, um, in a technical assistance meeting that we had with the state. And they did shorten the hours, um, and so that they could actually have more of that work experience. But the pre was always really for the younger, uh, high school students so that they could get that more work experience, work development prior to the July.
I, I appreciate it being addressed, that's good. Thank you. So it's a yes.
Commissioner Lutz.
Yes.
Mr. Sorrow.
Yes.
Commissioner Marchand.
Yes.
Commissioner Taylor.
Yes.
Deputy Director Romero.
Yes.
Director Soleo.
Yes.
Resolution 2024-110, Resolution approving settlement in the matter of bond buyers pending in the Office of the Commissary of Law, AOL docket number SCV 08725-23. Do I have a motion and second?
So move.
Second.
Commissioner Albrecht.
Yes.
Commissioner Lutz.
Yes.
Commissioner Sorrow.
Yes.
Commissioner Marchand.
Yes.
Commissioner Taylor.
Yes.
Deputy Director Romero.
Yes.
Director Soleo.
Yes.
Resolution 2024-111, Resolution authorizing use of competitive contracting providing out of school, industry focused occupational training internship program. Services for the Cumberland County, for Cumberland County. Do I have a motion and second?
So move.
Second. Commissioner Albrecht.
Yeah, but I would, I would like to hear from Mrs. Leonardo because this is actually another good program that should be, if we didn't ask about that, but it would be nice to hear because this is, uh, this is something we've been asking for, for a while.
We're back on deck.
So this, this is actually something we've been asking for a while and it's a, it's a good kickoff to it and, uh, hopefully there'll be more of this stuff, so.
I have a few items on these dents.
Yeah, if you want to address.
Can we do this?
My question is, if, if we had discussion before, you're supposed to just vote on...
Well, sorry, Mr. Sorrow, I made comments, I will make comments, this is a kind of a consent.
No, almost vote, you're just supposed to vote. You're supposed to do all your comments and, and in the beginning, when they have comments on the resolution, they, there are the times to do the comments, not doing the vote.
That's for the public, not for the commissioners. The commissioners make comments during the vote or to do it. So I'm not going to vote and, and if I have something to say, okay.
Okay, so.
And I'll continue to say.
Okay. So, thank you, uh, would you please get up on the podium, please? Thank you.
Hi.
You have two other additional?
For the out of school youth program?
Right. Would you speak to both of those, please?
Sure. So, um, about, oh, let's see, July of '23, we received additional funds for, um, for youth. This is completely separate than the grant that we were looking and we will be applying for because you all just approved it. Um, so this particular, uh, funding is for out of school youth. So we will be serving youth who are out of school, so either they dropped out of school or they met a criteria that would make them eligible for the program. And we do, you know, we put out an RFP through the purchasing department and, um, that's what this RFP is, what we're requesting, so that we can serve this particular population and hopefully they'll become, um, well geared to get employment within our county. Uh, but it's not just Cumberland County, there's the other two counties that also have the same exact RFP. The funding is a little bit different, um, so that's what that particular program is all about.
And the next one, please.
Oh, so the, oh, for the Atlantic City Electric? Okay, just wanted to double check. So, um, we've been very, very lucky here in Cumberland County and the Workforce Development Board. Atlantic City Electric gave us a little over a million dollars, um, five years ago and we are in our sixth year of this particular program. So about a year ago, um, my colleague Jamie Gomez, um, and I, we got together with Cumberland Regional High School and Bridgeton High School to see if they wanted to pilot a program. And it was with South Jersey Technical Education and Apprenticeship Program. I'm not sure if everybody is aware, but the trades, trading, um, availability, not only in our county, but in the region, is zero. And this company has come up and, um, they have partnered with us and we have been able to help support this particular program. Um, the one that you are looking at now is the second cohort. The first cohort with Bridgeton High School and Cumberland Regional, they graduated in early January with a hundred percent, um, passing of the test on the electrical side. So that program has been, like I said, really successful, um, and that's why we wanted to do it again. So Atlantic City Electric approved us to be able to utilize those funds so that we can continue this particular program. And, um, there's the same number of students on both sides for both high schools. Um, Jamie and I, we actually go and visit and check in to see how they're doing. And at the end of the program, um, once they graduate high school, because mind you, they're in high school, once they graduate high school, they're going to have a, um, a hiring event. So we're going to be inviting some of the trades that are here locally in Cumberland County as well as Salem. And, um, they're going to do a hiring event so that they can continue and be as an apprentice once they get hired.
Sounds like two great programs, thank you.
Yes.
I appreciate that, and the idea is to point out that we're trying to tackle trades, which has been asked for over and over again, and workforce development has been tried, attempted to do that. This is electrical, there should be other programs in the future that we're doing through CC texts, advanced manufacturing, all that stuff that's coming. So that's why I want, we had out.
Thank you, Commissioner.
And so, yes on that.
Commissioner Lutz.
Yes.
Commissioner Sorrow.
Yes.
Commissioner Marchand.
Yes.
Commissioner Taylor.
Yes.
Deputy Director Romero.
Yes.
Director Soleo.
Yes.
Resolution 2024-112, Resolution approving change order number one to contract for providing plumbing repair services for the County of Cumberland and Cumberland County Cooperative Contract Purchasing System Identifier Number 181-CC, CCPS, bid number 23-06, resubmission. Do I have a motion and second?
So move.
Second.
Commissioner Albrecht.
I want to make a comment on this also. Listen, I'm going to keep making comments and if, this is a work session, which is where we're supposed to do this. So if you guys have a problem with it, say it now, okay? That includes the clerk, okay? The bottom line is that this, I have no problem with this, that we've been upgrading our jail system and this is part of it. But the one thing I have a question about is that we hire, we have, and I'm putting on notice that we have plumbers that, plumbers that we hire in this county, that this should never get in this condition. And, and I like to put them on notice and that includes all our trades, that what I'm being told that, and I'm saying that, that they've been asked to work because it was all hands on deck, it was a year ago, to help fix this jail. And, and they, when people bring in notes or told that they can't work in a jail or no, that's not what I'm assigned, they work for the county. And, and I'm saying it, maybe the other commissioners won't, that maybe, just maybe, that their jobs are not as, uh, as secure as possible because we could delegate it out if they don't want to do their jobs. That includes the plumbing, carpentry, electrical, all those jobs. If things like this are one of our main buildings.
Commissioner, may I just speak to that?
Actually, I'm just making a statement.
No, I'm just saying, some of those, some of these projects that you're talking about, the one with this particular contract and, um, there's only contract with, uh, the last in the cap, but it was local. There are a little, these particular projects are a little bit more in, uh, the public works that our departments, a little bit at their scope of work. So that's why you're seeing some of this outside contractors coming in. I, I feel what you're saying, you'd like to see more of it, but paying us to save money and I agree with you there. This is a little.
This has been done over time and if a little problem tackled, they don't become big problems. So I'm not saying that this is, could be bigger, we need professionals to go in there, but I want to make sure they know that when we're, they're told to go into areas to help fix it and they don't want to go into those areas, that's their job. And, and if they don't want to do their job, then we'll take those, that's what I'm pointing out, so.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Lutz, yes.
Thank you.
Commissioner Lutz.
Yes.
Commissioner Sorrow.
Yes.
Commissioner Marchand.
Yes.
Commissioner Taylor.
Yes.
Deputy Director Romero.
Yes.
Director Albrecht. I mean, Director Soleo, sorry. Resolution 2024-113, Resolution authorizing an amendment to the shared service agreement with the commercial township for resurfacing of a county owned roadway within commercial township. Do I have a motion and second?
So move.
Second.
Commissioner Albrecht.
Yes.
Commissioner Lutz.
Yes.
Commissioner Sorrow.
Yes.
Commissioner Marchand.
Yes.
Commissioner Taylor.
Yes.
Deputy Director Romero.
Yes.
Director Soleo.
Yes.
Resolution 2024-114, Resolution authorizing memorandum of understanding between the Cumberland County, Cumberland Salem, Cape May Workforce Development Board and the Cumberland Regional Board of Education concerning ACE funding for electric, electrical program for schools starting February 2024. Do I have a motion and second?
So move.
Second.
Commissioner Albrecht.
Yes.
Commissioner Lutz.
Yes.
Commissioner Sorrow.
Yes.
Commissioner Marchand.
I'd like to make a brief comment. Many of you know, I sat on the board of Cumberland Regional High School for, um, a year. And any of the administrative staff there, as well as the board, were making a concerted effort to fill the needs where it comes to the trades. And I'm, I'm very excited to see this program, I'd love to see more of it, and absolutely a yes on this.
Commissioner Taylor.
Yes.
Deputy Director Romero.
Yes.
Director Soleo.
Yes.
Resolution 2024-115, Resolution authorizing memorandum of understanding between the Cumberland Salem, Cape May Workforce Development Board and the Bridgeton Board of Education concerning ACE funding for electrical program for schools starting February 2024. Do I have a motion and second?
So move.
Second.
Commissioner Albrecht.
Yes.
Commissioner Lutz.
Absolutely yes.
Commissioner Sorrow.
Yes.
Commissioner Marchand.
Yes.
Commissioner Taylor.
Yes.
Deputy Director Romero.
Yes.
Director Soleo.
Yes.
Resolution 2024-116, Resolution authorizing payment of bills. Do I have a motion and second?
So move.
Second.
Commissioner Albrecht.
Yes.
Commissioner Lutz.
Yes.
Commissioner Sorrow.
Yes.
Commissioner Marchand.
Yes.
Commissioner Taylor.
Yes.
Deputy Director Romero.
Yes.
Director Soleo.
Yes.
Before we get into the public comment period, I'd like to make an introduction of an addition to the administration. Uh, that's Council Jeff Delazaro. Say hello, Jeff.
Hi, everybody. Welcome. Thank you.
He's been on board for about a month or something?
Uh, about three weeks.
About three weeks, yeah. Congratulations, sir.
Thank you very much.
All right. All right, we want to open this up for public comment, new business.
We're going to do a agenda.
Oh, sorry, my apologies.
You're sort of the ones that are on the agenda.
Yes.
Resolution, or item ID number 14813, Resolution awarding a contract for providing probation, enrichment and transportation program with life skills component for the Cumberland County Youth Services Advisory Council, RFP 23-59, resubmission. Resolution 14944, Resolution accepting grant award for the FFY 23 State and Local Cybersecurity Grant Program. 14971, Resolution authorizing application and grant agreement with the New Jersey Department of Human Services and the Cumberland County Office on Aging and Disability for the Cumberland County State Health Insurance Assistance Program. 14533, Resolution awarding contract for specifications for FY 2023 Federal Road Program Townships of Fairfield, Hopewell, Lawrence and Marsh River, Cumberland County, New Jersey. Federal project number STVGP-D00S, State Job Number 600364, Bid Number 23-32. 14902, Resolution awarding contract for providing specifications for 2023 Local Freight Impact Fund Road Program 2CR650, Bid Number 24-01. 14907, Resolution authorizing the award of a non-fair and open contract for annual support and maintenance services for the InfoShare Case Management and Cloud Service for the Cumberland County Prosecutor's Office. 14917, Resolution authorizing the award of a non-fair and open contract for light software support and maintenance services for the Records Information Management System rings. 14933, Resolution authorizing award of a non-fair and open contract for great key license premier unlimited iOS and Android extractions for proprietary software hardware. 14936, Resolution authorizing award of a non-fair and open contract for providing proprietary software and hardware upgrades to the courthouse access system. 14937, Resolution authorizing award of a non-fair and open contract for providing an employee assistance program for the employees of Cumberland County. 14938, Resolution authorizing the award of a non-fair and open professional service contract for providing legal services for the Cumberland County Board of Health. 14939, Resolution authorizing grant agreements between County of Cumberland and the participating municipalities for the administration of DMHAS, Youth Leadership Brands to prevent alcohol, alcoholism and drug abuse. 14943, Resolution rescinding Resolution 2024-55, Resolution appointing assistant county council assigned to the Division of Social Services. 14945, Resolution establishing the Cumberland County Jail Operational Subcommittee and appointing members. 14947, Resolution authorizing purchase of Barracuda Networks Message Archive or Cloud Services Interpretations Number 24422665 from the New Jersey Cooperative Purchasing Alliance. Contact under for the Department of Information Technology. 14948, Resolution authorizing the award of a non-fair and open contract for the purchase of Westlaw Proflex Subscription Services for Thompson Reuters for the Department of Corrections Inmate Law Library. 14952, Resolution authorizing the award of a non-fair and open contract for providing printing of election materials for the Cumberland, Cumberland County Prosec office and Board of Elections. 14956, Resolution authorizing purchases from state contract vendors. 14957, Resolution approving change order number two and file the contract for specifications for the 2021 Road Program City of Biden, Cumberland County, New Jersey, Bid Number 22-02. 14958, Resolution approving change order number one to the contract for fiscal year 2022 Federal Road Program City of Biden, Cumberland County, New Jersey, Federal Project Number STVGP-0655. 14959, Resolution canceling expired contracts for February 2024 covering materials, services and supplies. 14960, Resolution authorizing increase of monetary ceiling for providing legal services for civil commitments and representation of the County of Cumberland and the County of Druster's Office. 14964, Resolution authorizing state equipment use agreement with the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection for the State Mosquito Control Commission to provide equipment to the Cumberland County Department of Mosquito Control. 14968, Resolution authorizing the award of a non-fair and open contract for providing professional legal services to the Cumberland County Division of Social Services. 14970, Resolution exercising option to renew the shared service agreements between the Cumberland County Prosecutor's Office and the City of Bridgeton Board of Education, the City of Millwall Board of Education, the City of Vilem Board of Education, the Cumberland Regional District, Cumberland Regional School District Board of Education, the Cumberland County Board of Educational Education concerning the Youth Trauma Intervention Program and amending the statute to include additional obligation of federal funds. 14972, Resolution authorizing assignment of the matter of an investigation of a complaint made by an employee of the Cumberland County Department of Public Works. 14973, Resolution authorizing assignment of the matter of an investigation of a complaint 14973, resolution authorizing assignment of the matter of an investigation of a complaint made by an employee of the Cumberland County, the Cumberland Area Transit System. 14977, resolution for any final approval of the Haldor Farm application to self-development fees met. Going to go to the regular resolutions. Some of these are placeholders. 14963, resolution authorizing approving additional temporary budget appropriations and the amount of...
That's just going to be for whatever grant we get in.
14764, resolution awarding fair and open contract for providing vaccination services for the Board of Health, RFP number 23-70, it's pending. 14895 is a resolution awarding a contract, and that's a placeholder. 14935, resolution awarding fair and open professional service contract, that's another placeholder. 14950, resolution authorizing purchase from New Jersey State Contract Vendor, that's another placeholder.
If I may, I just want to identify the placeholders, just because it's the way it looks on the agenda. There's no information at all.
Right.
So the one 895 is actually for a bid for emulsified asphalt, so the bids were received, they're just not tabulated yet, so they're going through the paperwork. 935 is for the planning board solicitor, because that was re-advertised. 936 is for proprietary maintenance upgrades from the courthouse access control, so that's with a company called Integrating Systems. 950 is for the 901 upgrade for the voice recorder, which was part of the 2023 capital plan. And the 976 is a change order to Motorola's contract for the 700 megahertz, no cost increase or decrease, it's just a minor scope modification. So if there is a certain model radio that was originally ordered, but then there's a different model version, it's just changing the line. Okay.
14962, resolution authorizing an amendment to the shared service agreement with commercial township concerning the replacement of a county-owned bridge on Miller Avenue within commercial township. 14975, resolution authorizing application to grant funding from the Attorney General's Office for the state fiscal year 2024, alternative responses to reduce instances of violence and isolation together grant program. 14976 was explained. 14978, resolution authorizing a shared service agreement between Cumberland County, Salem County, Gloucester County, and the Cumberland County Improvement Authority concerning design work related to the regional jail facility site. 14981, resolution authorizing local recreation improvement grant application. 14982, resolution authorizing a shared service agreement between Cumberland County and the Cumberland County Utilities Authority. 1493, resolution authorizing assignment of a complaint related to part-time employee health insurance. 14984, resolution authorizing assignment of labor matters concerning the Cumberland County Utilities Authority to test the HEPA test in white in accordance with the shared service agreement. Do I have a motion, second, with a public comment for new business?
Second.
Commissioner. Okay. Any other public comment?
Nancy Ridgeway from Upper Deerfield Township, who just went over the agenda for the next meeting, and aren't you going to discuss any of these?
You got anything in particular?
Yeah, the shared service agreement with the CCIA. Resolution authorizing a shared service agreement between Cumberland County, Salem County, Gloucester County, and the Cumberland County Improvement Authority concerning design work related to a regional jail facility site.
It's a mouthful, isn't it?
Yes, it is. We have a site. Buck sheet on the road, what is happening with that site?
Well, let's go away right to counsel that, because I think we have some answers for you.
So there's communication about potential for a regional jail between Salem and Cumberland and Gloucester. In order to examine that and explore it, there needs to be some architectural work, some engineering work, and we had a bond money to tell, of course, by the CCIA. So there's a need to have a shared services agreement in order to repay or to facilitate the design work. There was an application for grant funding, for lead funding, for the effort, and for the engineering work, doing wetland study that needs to be made as to pay a larger site at the footprint of the Salem jail, if that can move forward.
I heard this afternoon around 1:00 that this was set in stone already, that we were going to do the shared service agreement with Salem County and Gloucester County for the jail. I thought we were going to do a study to see if it would work out, and if Gloucester County really wanted to be on board.
So Gloucester County has joined, to the extent that they did sign the agreement now, there needs to be a study, because right now there's no numbers put to paper.
Right.
And that's what the purpose is of the engineering is, that's what we need.
I would like to sit on that board and make the 40 grand. Is that fair?
This is originally, if I may, if I may, I just want to say this...
You want to make a separate board for this combined jail, that it would be an entity within itself.
That is correct.
Like a jail utility authority.
And that's statutory from the state.
Right.
Does anybody understand that? That was a mouthful.
Yes. It's a positive direction for the three counties to share the load in the future. And since you mentioned the slab, that's...
Yeah, we spent a lot of money on that. We've got litigation for part of the energy.
Unfortunately, it was a very mistaken opportunity.
And we're spending hundreds of thousands of dollars to redo our jail that we already have in Bridgeton.
It's the same architect. Unfortunately, we're caught in a situation where we need to use the same facilities and operational contractors and project managers. It will take us a while to push the director. It'll take time for us to get that built and operate. We're doing our due diligence, our homework right now to get it all set up, but it's going to take time to build those wings. Meanwhile, we have a jail that we have to maintain, that we need to use.
I understand that.
That's why I said the body there.
I understand that, but a lot of people in the county don't understand, well, Cumberland County is going to take taxpayer funds and build a facility on property that we do not own in another county. Now, that is a big question that you need to ask citizens.
Counsel, would you please explain?
Let me understand what you're doing, but I only have five minutes.
Your question only questions, so let counsel maybe address, you know, everybody, so they get...
As long as it don't take this time away from from...
Right.
We'll pause the clock.
Can we pause the clock?
Pause the clock.
Pause the clock.
You guys stopped it, you guys are back in.
So it is not clear at this point who's going to own the ground. Right now Salem owns the ground. But the creature of statute that's designed by the state at this point calls for a perpetual authority to maintain control of that ground. So that looks like a lease ownership I can't speak to, but the last model that was provided by the state right before the most recent update that was supplied, commissioners, was, had a lifespan. This calls for a perpetual lifespan, although there are moves ready for entities to get out, but there isn't a standard lifespan where we have to walk away. So as to ownership and control, one or the other, you're going to need to have that asset.
We're creating a regional facility, and that's why, and it just happens to be in Salem, and you know, because we've in Cumberland County, we have how many prisons, jail prisons, and a federal prison.
Another one is that we've had the Cumberland County jail for, what, 150 years or so, maybe 250 years.
So it's...
There's some discussion that's repurposing of what we have here.
Yes.
Go ahead. We are going to put it to use.
Yes, we're going to have to, because we're going to have to, now, I don't know, because you might be having a regional jail, so you might not have to bring the prisoners back to Bridgeton to use our court facilities.
We still have a number of years in time before that facility is ready to go, and we still have to maintain...
Right, and it'll probably be a 40-year agreement, and none of us are going to be here in 40 years. We have another resolution.
Ms. Ridgeway, I do believe that the hope is that even if we do build this regional facility, we still have this building that's here, and the hope is that it can be used for something else in the future.
Some other deed that we need to...
It's the old related...
Commissioner Loes is correct. There's so many different options.
We need to...
It still is a county property that we should not continue to allow to fall apart.
That's correct.
I'll keep my mouth shut on that. We have another resolution here, that, a resolution authorizing, it's 14962, authorizing an amendment to a shared service agreement with commercial township concerning the replacement of a county-owned bridge on Miller Avenue within commercial township. Can anybody tell me what's happening with the South Avenue Bridge?
Counsel, please.
So if I understand correctly, that has now been pitched to the DPP, right? Everything was done, state historic preservation, SHPO had weighed in, and it is in the hands of the DPP with the clock running for various permits that are needed. They're the last...
So we had the permits.
We have quite a few.
We have quite a few permits, but you don't have the last of them.
Okay.
It's like a major exam of a juncture of title, wetlands, freshwater wetlands, historic, you name it, it's there.
Oh, you named it, and it was there. Boy, I wish all those rules and regulations was in effect five years ago. I had a bridge that you could use, since you need to replace a bridge. There's a bridge on Burlington Road at Irving Avenue that you replaced five years ago. And you've been holding my property hostage all that time with flooding. So I suggest, you know, you should never come up to the microphone and make any statements without having a real good suggestion. So I suggest that you take that bridge out, use it in one of these other bridges that you need to do, and put a bridge in on Burlington Road at Irving Avenue that will allow for the water to run through properly without the bridge being on top of a sewer line. Therefore, I could maintain my property and maybe save what's left of it. Thank you.
We'll take a look at that.
You should take a look at that.
Director, we did look at that three, four years ago. This shepherd, this Ridgeway came up and asked us, and we did review that, and it was found that there were many to read. I don't remember the answers to it, but they did look at it, and so there is a report about it. There was a report.
And your engineer said that her property will be blocked. That's what your engineer at that time stated.
Well, did it change?
Her property will be blocked.
We have different engineer now, so we'll...
I understand that. Thank you very much.
Okay. Anybody else? Do you state your name, where you live?
Sandy Acevedo, Upper Deerfield Township. A couple here. Why, why do we repeatedly re-advertize for requests for additional proposals for legal services? It seems like every month there's always a re-advertising for legal services. Is there a reason behind?
Okay.
So we put it out once, and we got a bunch of responses, and there was questions from the commissioners and the professional staff of, did we get the broadest scope we could, and it went back out once. So I don't think it's time after time, I think it's second round.
Well, maybe on this one, but on others, maybe on this particular one, but there's others that go out.
And they all went out again.
It's our lawyer.
You know?
No, no, no. You have lawyers you probably hire that are on the case, and they go back to you and say, you know, we need more money. And you give them more money on a monthly basis. This one, I didn't see any, but every month we get an increase. For lawyers. The question I think, Mrs. Acevedo, is that why do we go out for bid on either the same attorneys or additional attorneys? Just to create expanding word, exactly, I just want to see, took the words out of my mouth. We're expanding the pool, so therefore we have more choices.
Oh, I understand. I understand.
That's the basis of it.
I'm concerned about the additional cost for the county that's involved every time we go out for these re-advertisements. You've got staff time, you've got publication time, and you've got a huge list of attorneys. I think you need to take advantage of the ones that bid when it first goes out and have an interest instead of...
Counsel, do they all come in the numbers that we are acceptable as well? That's another thing, too.
But you don't all... Can I bring up the...
Sure, please.
Not all areas are bid at the same time. You understand what I'm saying? In other words, you don't have, we'll say, attorneys that are going to be working on real estate, just using an example. That might be one time, and then you're going to have attorneys that are going to be working on, we'll say, employee matters. That'd be another time. And so what I'm saying is, we have different segments throughout the years for different attorneys for different projects. So what happens, you might see two this month, you might see another two next month, but they're going to be related to different matters. They're not all coming out at the same time. It's not like we start in January and get everybody at one time. It didn't start all that...
Plus different firms have different attorneys who handle different scopes of profession. So therefore, you're going to see the same, you know, attorney-type, what do we call them? Just attorneys, basically the same firm. Excuse me. Same firm that comes in time and time again. That's another reason why you'll see it, but like you said, real estate or whatever. But Mrs. Acevedo, you talk about our architects.
We're talking about re-advertising for...
Just that most of the way, we can probably say that's minimal, but we can probably find that out where you wish. Would you care, would you care for that information?
It's, I got it.
Would you care for that information for the advertisers? We can get that.
No, I know, I know what, I know what it says. What type of information are you talking about?
When you're asking about the advertising, the costs.
Yeah, I'm talking about the cost of re-advertising, you know, over, more than once.
We can get that for you. I'm sure we can do that.
Well, I don't know how you would get the cost of re-advertising, because for the staff time and things like that, I'm sure it would fluctuate.
Yeah, so whenever we do a resubmission, it's, nothing has changed as far as the specs go, so it's really just adjusting the dates. It's the same document, you just have resubmission at the end, put it to the papers, and then post it to the portal. It's not that much, but yeah, if you want, I can give the dollar figure for that, but it helps celebrate any kind of... I think the planning board wanted, though, that one, there were responses the first time, but they were all rejected because they jacked up their ownership. It's good.
Because they had no...
Yeah, that was different.
Thank you. ID number 14982 on the CCUA shared services for legal matters. Can somebody give me some insight on that?
Counselor.
So a call from Bob Carlson, I've got questions about this, I've got questions about that. The county council office, although we're two attorneys now, which is great, has a potential for a conflict in providing legal, we can provide backup, but we can't provide legal guidance to the CCUA to the extent that this board has the right to reject their amendments. So the recommendation came by, let's do a shared service with them and make our lists, our attorney pools available to the CCUA. That's where that comes from.
And thank you for that, and I guess the public didn't really hear the name and the position of this gentleman right here when he said it the first time. I'm getting some...
Oh, I'm sorry, Jeff Blazaro, Deputy County Counsel. Yes, I got it off, finally. Thank you, gentlemen. If you can't find me, fun, Jeff. I'll be under my desk.
The next thing, last meeting, the resolution 2024-92, at the January 23rd, 24 meeting. It was a resolution approving a change order, number one, to contract for providing security guard services for the Cumberland County Department of Social Services, Cumberland County Library in various locations as needed. Ms. Loes, you had stated that this board was saving the taxpayers' money by outsourcing the security guard services. So I feel you may not quite understand how that works. When you're already paying someone to do a job, in this example, the sheriff's department, but then you hire someone to actually do the work, that's not saving taxpayer money by any means.
A lot of the sheriffs are being paid at different rates, depending on the years that they have been, depending on their position. And for the most part, and I haven't looked at exactly who the sheriff's department is assigning to these locations, and first of all, that resolution was just to adjust hours based off of an error in hours that were originally assigned. That's all that resolution was, but I did say that because sometimes we have sheriff's officers who are being paid at a much higher rate than some of the personnel that are coming in from a third-party securities company. So that is why I said that.
Yeah, I get that, but if you're already paying the sheriff's department to provide these services...
But we're not already paying the sheriff's department to provide them services.
That's, I asked, I asked...
Just as though we're paying, you know, we have police that we're paying, we have sheriff's officers that we're paying. It's not necessarily that we're paying them to guard county buildings. That's not necessarily what their task is.
But I think, I believe I asked that, and you said that was what they, what they, that they, that the sheriff... I believe I asked that, and you said that the sheriff's department provided the security for those, for the offices.
No, I don't believe I said that.
Okay.
First of all, the resolution was to amend the number of hours that was being given to cover those security services.
No, I understand what the resolution was about.
What I, I think the question was asked, why are we not using sheriff's officers to provide security to those buildings, correct so far? Am I correct so far?
Today?
No, last month that you were referring to. Am I correct so far?
No, it was stated from someone on this board that that was one of the functions of the sheriff's department, was to provide security for the county buildings.
I don't know who said that, and that is a function of the sheriff's department for certain areas, for certain buildings. We're talking about the courthouse, we're talking about our administrative... We're talking about the courthouse, we're talking about our administrative building, but not every single building, no, that is not true.
All right, I'll have to get back and listen to the tape then.
Okay.
Thank you.
Hi, how are you? Celeste Wiley, Cumberland County Clerk. First, I had a couple announcements from the office, which is this Saturday is the fire elections for the three municipalities that have fire elections, and it's from 2:00 to 9:00 p.m. Not necessarily hours that we are used to, but 2:00 to 9:00 p.m., commercial township, downtownship, and Morris River. And our office mailed out 688 vote-by-mail applications to voters who are all future elections to those municipalities. We are also currently working hard on getting ready for the primary election, and I noticed our printing resolution here for the board of elections, and my office is on this, on a resolution for next week's vote. So I wanted to go over that a little bit, and if you don't mind, just to say, we worked very hard to streamline the budget this year, and I want to also explain that since 2018, the printing budget has increased exponentially because of the state mandates for increasing vote-by-mail ballots, all future election, and having paper ballots at the machines. We also increased our paper printing expenses because of the type of the machine that was purchased by the county a few years ago when we went, changed the machine, and so we have a lot more paper. But on the plus side, when the state initially said that municipalities can move their elections to the general election, and the county would take responsibility for those election services, the agreement was that in the primary election, we would build back the primary expenses back to the municipalities. And that has become now much more expensive for them because the primaries, because we are now required to do something called district-level reporting, which means we now go from 14 ballot styles to 92 different ballot styles, which, yes, exactly, it has really increased their expenses. But this year, the state has said, okay, well, we know that district-level reporting costs a lot of money and has created a burden, and so we have a grant program that allows us to apply for refunding of some of that money. And we did apply for it, and we will be getting back $158,000 of that money. So even though the printing budget for my office is something like $500,000, $158,000 will come back to the actual county from the state of New Jersey for that. There was also about a grant that was just reimbursed also for vote-by-mail for $18,000 that we've already received. So we are trying to, and working with, trying to get our costs down so that we're, I know that that's a 601,000, but my office is 525,000, but with the reimbursement of the grants, it comes down to 348,000, which is more in line for when we were printing for 2019. So with the help of the grants, I think that it will level out. And we will now reimburse, once we get the money back from the state of New Jersey, we will be reimbursing the municipalities $100,000, so-
Ms. Rana, can you mention the-
I mailed you a letter.
I know, I've got that, but can you mention publicly that the types of reimbursement is going to happen for some of the townships? Because there are ones really that are, will be suffering the most, I would think, cost-wise.
Right, so-
Because of the budgets.
Yeah, I don't have the actual breakdown for each municipality, and I can get that for you if you would like.
Okay.
I've given it over to the finance committee, because the money will come to the finance committee, and then we're going to have to do the reimbursement for this year. But moving forward, because this is, every year, we're not going to bill them for these services, so the mail-in ballots, the setups, the emergency ballots, the setups, and the provisional ballots, the setups, so that's $100,000 every year that we will not be billing to the municipalities, because we will be getting it back from the, from the state of New Jersey. So instead of doing, billing them, right, we're going to get the money anyway, so.
Is that a set fee, $100,000, or are you adjusting it?
No, it'll adjust, it'll adjust, depending on the amount that we actually have to produce. So for this, for this year, we currently have 12,460 actual ballots, vote-by-mail ballots that we will mail out to, they're on our list. But that means probably it's going to be more like 17,000 to 18,000, since we're in a presidential election year, and campaigns will start increasing their drive to get people to vote by mail, so. But I think that's all good news, getting money back from the state of New Jersey.
Excuse me, can you say the 17, it would be about 17,000, is that just for the primary, not both the primary and the general?
That will probably just be the general. They'll start pushing, what we see is, and my election supervisor is here, Kelly Hoffman, what we'll start seeing is, the campaigns will start gearing up, and we'll start getting inundated with vote-by-mail applications. They'll be encouraging, in fact, we saw it last year with both, both parties, they were trying to increase their vote-by-mail voters. And so because of that, it really does put a burden, a financial burden on the office and, and the counties, because paper costs money, each ballot costs money, and yeah, so I think that-
Was there any estimate for the primary?
For the primary, well, estimated, you mean the actual-
Vote by mail.
Oh, for the primary, we're going to have 6,913 actual Democratic ballots and 2,893 Republican ballots, so.
Is the clerk's office sending out vote-by-mail applications?
No, well, yes, we are, yes, we are. Yeah, we do.
And is it on what criteria, is it everyone, or?
We, we actually mailed this year vote-by-mail applications to people who voted provisional and for people who, senior citizens in a certain age group, and that's it, yeah. We don't, we don't, like, no, we can't do everybody, we cannot do everybody.
Parties are working to increase vote-by-mail, and that's putting a financial burden on the clerk's office, but the clerk's office is also sending vote-by-mail voters as well.
Yes, yes, yeah, but we only do it for people who, as I said, who seem to have issues with voting at the machines, so vote-by-mail voters, like, well, one, we have to, we have to also touch unaffiliated voter in the primary, so that's 2,420. We have to send them a letter that says that we can't mail you a ballot, because you are unaffiliated and you have to declare a party, and that's, that happened last year, so, yeah.
Has there been any talk about, you said it used to be, you know, 40 municipalities, ballots '96 or '92?
No, it was 14, yeah, 14 ballot styles, now it's 92 different ballot styles.
You said they changed it, that increased the cost, and so the state's solution was to give money, give a grant. Did they ever talk about maybe go back to-
No, no. The state doesn't give back.
I'm sorry, but I would say money, but not to give any money back.
Yes, no, no, I may, I feel like we're fortunate that they're at least going to reimburse us, you know?
They'll take it, but-
But that doesn't decrease the work, and, you know.
Okay.
So, any questions on just anything?
How would the general public obtain the ability to do a mail-in ballot? What action does it take so that you can get that?
Sure, there's many, they can call our office, and we can mail them an application. And once they mail, you know, mail the application back to our office, then they're on the list. So any, but anybody who's on the list prior to the 45 days, we have to have the ballots out that, within that 45-day period, so you want to get on the list as soon as possible, all right, if you're interested in voting by mail.
Is there, I've asked this question before, the local printer, since this is a consistent, again and again, is there any possibility that a local printer could gear up to do this at all?
So up till 2020, right, we have done RFPs, and we got, we received no, no bidders other than the one we currently have. We used to, and Kelly can give you some history, we worked with Gem Printing-
Gem Printing.
Prior to, with, prior, with the prior clerk, and what happened.
He came to us, and he said he was not able to do this, he was not going to put a million dollars into his company for two elections, well, three elections back then, because you have to be certified through the state and through Dominion voting system in order to even do the ballot printing, because it's not just printing on a piece of paper. Because it goes through, once we design it and the printer prints it, then they have to ship every single ballot to Dominion and get it approved by them that everything scans properly with these new machines that we took over 2000-
2001.
Yeah.
2021.
So, we're in hand, just can't, anybody just can't print it. So it's not just like printing a regular piece of paper. And another thing is that where Dominion keeps you coming in is the ballot logo paper. So every election, the paper is different, whether it looks like it's white paper or not, there's an emblem on there, and you can't use that same paper for every election. So that's where we get into money now, too.
Was it watermark, was it watermark or some type?
It's got like, it's something like, you know, like, you know, your clerk, like the clerk seal or something that's in, like, in print, yeah. Yeah, and it's the paper, because the ballots are different every election, bigger, different sizes, you might have a front and a back, it's always different paper that you have to use for every election.
We're getting in the weeds of this, but it's very interesting, I think we should probably talk more with the, with the clerk in the future about the difficulties that we're having. It seems like this is more of a way of basically becoming a monopoly on one particular, you know?
There's only a few printers in the state of New Jersey that are actually certified to it.
We understand.
Okay.
All right, Ms. Rana, thank you very much for your time.
You're welcome.
All right, any others? Going once, going twice?
Motion, please. All favor?
All right.
We have a resolution.
Yes. Counsel, yeah, that, please.
Resolution 2024-117, resolution providing for a meeting now open to the public in accordance to the provisions of the New Jersey Senator Byron and Bear, Open Public Meeting Act and JSA, 10,412. Matters relating to litigation negotiations and the attorney-client privilege, and matters relating to the employment relationship. Do I have a motion and second?
Motion.
All favor? That's actually a vocal.
Commissioner Albrecht?
Yes.
Commissioner Loews?
Yes.
Commissioner Sauer?
Yes.
Commissioner Marchand?
Yes.
Commissioner Kelly?
Yes.
Deputy Director Romero?
Yes.
Director Saleau?
Yes. So I believe you would have us walk to leave people if they want to stay in the room, and there's no action needed to stay there after your executive session.
Okay, anyways, welcome to state, we're going to go in the back conference room.
Motion, please. 2021.
2021.
Hey, he's not prepared.